I'm gonna call this six o'clock joint public hearing to order with the planning council and the Blackstone Town Council. This is a little bit of an unorthodox situation we have. We have an election issue where the at-large seat that I did not run for is gonna be, is gonna be a hearing held on the eighth to determine if there's gonna be a recount.
Ninth.
Ninth. Eighth, ninth, okay. So, the code requires that I stay in office until such time that we get a replacement sworn in. So, Ms. Thompson has asked me to preside over this meeting, and I'm glad to do so. At this time, Philip, if you're ready to begin your hearing, you have the floor.
I'm waiting for the new council person.
Okay. How are you, Ms. Jones? Well, first of all, if you don't mind, humor me. Join me in a word of prayer, please. Dear Lord, thank you for this beautiful town of Blackstone. I ask that you be with this new council, give them wisdom and courage and strength, bless them in all they do. I ask that the town constituency and residents and neighbors support this council. Guide and direct them in all they do, and may you find pleasure in the proceedings this evening. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The floor is yours.
I'll try to speak as closely as I can to the microphones so everybody can. The planning commission is here. Town council, this is being done as a joint public hearing. Once the public hearing itself is closed, then the council's free to stay or leave, however they want to do it, and then the planning commission will deliberate following that with perhaps a response or perhaps a recommendation. It'll be up to the planning committee on that point forward, but it's only intended for you guys to have to stay around for the public hearing course. Okay? The request from Rick Byers. If you have a copy of your, of the application in your packet, I bring to your attention the portion which says "proffers" on the bottom of the first page, and that's really the important part. As you guys may or may not know, the planning commission's included, the majority of the property along the front has already been zoned, general business. That was done a couple of years ago. I think the Gravit family came to us. All but a small portion of this lot was zoned, general business, I think in 2015 or 2015. A copy of our zoning, a revised zoning map, and Jim Pridgen, curious of, is sitting back there, and you can see where that property is. It's that larger yellow section. Anybody that at some point wants to take a look at it, and you can see that little notch is in the yellow. This is that notch. There are two public hearings actually tonight, the first of which is to zone certain areas from R1 to the general business. Okay? This is why I'm gonna have to clean the property too. But the first public hearing will rezone this small section, which is 2.8 acres, and this portion of the property would be rezoned. And then it's 11.3 acres, and then approximately half of this property. Those would be rezoned from the R1 district to the general business district. Hotels, motels, retail, offices, all of those kinds of things. Okay? That's the first public hearing. The second public hearing was for the residue of the property, this yellow area, to be rezoned as R3. And R3 is the most liberal, if that's the proper term, or permissive zoning district for residential activities, most dense, and it's not so much, as we've learned, it's not so much in the number of units or the density, because I think R2 and R3 are very parallel, but it's the uses that are more permissive in the R3 than they would be in the R2, specifically multifamily housing. So, everybody understands the definitions that the town of Blackstone uses. We have manufactured housing, which is a single or a double-wide manufactured home. Okay? We have modular homes, which are the exact same as a stick-built standard in Blackstone. Okay? We have duplexes, which is two of them bolted together, okay? Two houses or two units together. We also have townhouse-style development. If anybody's familiar with Jason Walker's building that he built out on Courthouse Road, I think he's got six units together. Each unit is distinct and adjacent to the next with no units on top. Okay? It could be two stories, but each unit has to be side by side. There cannot be separate dwelling units on top of each other. Okay? That's called a townhouse. And then finally, you have multifamily, which is what we all know as an apartment building. Okay? This is a straight-up R3. We'll allow those activities, but that's why I bring to your attention the proffers. And the proffers on them were just by a revolving. Now, a proffer is a voluntary condition that he's agreeable to, that would meet with his business plan. And I'll read these very quickly, because I do think they have a lot of bearing on a lot of the questions, I think perhaps maybe some of the neighbors had. No manufactured homes. No trailer park. No double wides, any of that kind of stuff. Okay? But it would permit modular homes. And there are modular homes that look very much like a double wide, but it's a different building standard. And Rick wisely, and I think this is the right way to handle it, has proffered five-twelve roof pitch, which means it doesn't look like a double wide. And indeed, the building standards are not a double-wide manufactured home. So, that has been proffered well. So, the manufactured homes, residential roof pitch is five to twelve. He would agree to required off-site improvements, which I would anticipate would be entrances and things like that may apply to the subdivision, any kind of traffic improvements or anything like that, based on traffic counts that I don't know right offhand, and I don't know if Rick or his folks that are with him know those exact numbers. But any subdivision in the town of Blackstone, I think anywhere in the state that's intended to be served by a VDOT maintain or subsidized by VDOT Street, I think does have to meet circumstances. And I don't think there's any doubt that you guys have probably done this many more times, but he would be required to do some of those kind of things. We don't have the specific, because we don't know the exact layout of the number of units, because some of this is based on trip per day, I think is actually the term that VDOT uses, the number of vehicles per day per unit or type of dwelling. The apartments would be in the R3 area are age-restricted. This is the age-restricted area. It's about 4.6 acres. Okay? But we took it a bit further, and our project is limited to one 4.6-acre, age-restricted apartment complex. So, what the proffer is, is that there would not be apartments. Now, remember, not a townhouse, not a duplex, not a single-family, but an apartment or a multifamily dwelling, based on our definitions, would be restricted to that 4.6-acre tract. Okay? So, it's not gonna be a scatter of trailers. It can't be a scatter of manufactured homes. It can't be a scattering even of apartments. The apartments would be restricted to that one 4.6-acre section. Okay? That's the second request. The first, with these three areas being put into the BG, the residue of the property being rezoned to R3 is the second public hearing. Okay? From R1 to R3 with proffered conditions. The advertisement, I think there are proffered conditions mentioned in the advertisement, and the proffers, because this is a conditional zoning, whatever's resolved tonight would stay the same until town council. There wouldn't be modifications of those proffers until town council had an opportunity to weigh in on, and the application's the application at that point. But the negotiations and the resolution of any proffer or the wording in the proffer is to be completed by the planning commission and forwarded on to the council as recommended.
Chairman McCarthy. Do the planning council members have any questions thus far?
Not so far.
Okay. Council, are there any questions about this? I'm gonna open up the first public hearing for anyone that is in favor of this proposal. Anyone would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Hearing none. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against the first proposal? Town council, do you have any questions? Planning commission? I'm gonna close the public hearing on the first segment, and I'm gonna open the public hearing now on the second segment, and I'll make the same offer. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for the proposal, the second proposal of changing this real estate to BG?
Actually, whatever order you're using, the BG, from R1 to BG, is one public hearing, and then the second one is the bulk of the property.
Okay. Is there anyone like to speak for? Is there anyone who would like to speak against? Come to the podium, sir. What is your name?
Yuri Hickel.
I'm sorry?
Yuri Hickel.
Okay. To the podium right there, if you will. You're fine.
The microphone due to, maybe we can push it a little bit, make it more convenient. See if I can get that to you. Maybe you can stand over here. If you can stand right there, maybe it'll...
You're in a precarious situation. So, you're kinda stuck in a crossfire, but the planning council's behind you, and this is the town council, so whatever you're comfortable, okay? Yes. This area is ugly culture right now, what I understand. It's zoned R1, but it's a firemine. So, I'm one of the neighboring properties. This would put thousands of people right there, you know, where I live, in conservation area. Okay? And the property I live is in Nottaway County. So, the define of conservation area district is, the conservation district covers the unincorporated portions of the county, which are occupied by a mix of rural residential users, open spaces, and variety of small, non-intensified farms. This district is established to conserve these open spaces, to protect the rural residential character of the area, including small farms that are compatible with neighboring residential uses, conserve water, forest, and auto-natural resources, and maintain distinctly rural environment. So, with this put right there, because this is right neighboring my property, you know, that's unacceptable for me. So, I object to this.
Is there a conservation easement on this property now?
There is no easement on that property. The town does have one, and a portion of Wetlands in its industrial park down this creek bottom. If you guys are familiar, when you go in the old landfill, first big cove you come to, and back in behind the industrial park, there's actually a conservation easement that I'm aware of. There may be others, but that's the only one that I'm aware of.
Members of council, do you have any questions for this gentleman? Yes, sir.
If there was to be a conservation water implemented, what would you consider to be acceptable? I mean, in terms of thousand feet, 5,000 feet?
We would have to come to a conclusion on that. You know, as now, I'm not, I don't have any specific on that. I mean, I have the map here. It's on the county map. One, see that?
The yellow... This is your property over here?
No, no, no. My property is...
Would you show the council and maybe turn around? Sir?
There you go.
Sir, would you point out on this map here for the council members to see where your property's located?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Now, turn the map around for the rest of the planning council. Did everyone see that okay?
Keep our younger in the county, so we can be professional.
Yes, sir.
Be sure the council knows. I'm gonna pull that away.
Does anyone live on that property?
Yes, I lived there with my family.
And what road takes them into that property?
It's a dirt road. It's off State Road, East Court House Road.
He coming off of Bab's Lane? Is that on...
Sorry, it's coming off this road right here.
Okay.
There's a dirt road.
There's a dirt road in that very bottom?
I'm sorry?
Down there in the bottom, there's a dirt road?
Yes, sir.
Right there's a bridge.
Right here, this road. There's an access road.
The same one that we use for sewage pump station.
Yes, there's a pump station.
You know, courthouse research station.
Is anybody else down there other than you?
I'm sorry?
Anybody else in that area?
Yeah, there's several lots. There's a, but they not occupied, as they use them for hunting and other purpose, but they not occupied.
Any other questions?
So, you're the only family that lives down there? Is what you're saying?
Yes, sir. Under, off of that road. Yes, sir. There's all the properties over there. Then next property over, there's houses. You know? You can see on the map here.
I'd prefer you show it on that map, so all could see.
There's houses all here. These three properties are not occupied. There's hunting property right here.
You satisfied, Mr. Mayor? Any from the planning commission, any questions or comments for this gentleman?
Not directly, but indirectly, Philip. That road down there is gonna be, is gonna be left in the condition it is now, as far as we know. Bab's Lane, as everybody knows, is the one where the bus shop is and the water tank. Where we looked around. You look through that, there's a water tank here, bus shop, and Frank Carlin's building, and the residue of our industrial park is here, and the old courthouse road landfill is beyond that. Bab's Lane is a privately-owned property. The agreement between the town and the Gravit family, when we purchased their property to build our industrial park, is it didn't have to be a state-maintained road, but it had to be maintained at a state standard, and the town needs to work on the road, not for subdivision purposes, because it's not in the state maintenance system. But we do have an obligation, part of that agreement, we gotta get some potholes fixed. We're waiting for the timber to get cut, and Jason's been doing some things, and believe it or not, we sold some property, and we sold some timber in the industrial park, where the money intended to go to the road, we just didn't got it. But I'm gonna try to tie it in with the airport road that's probably going to be. But it is a...
But right now, I wanna understand, it's not gonna really be an interest off of Bab's into this property?
Well, this one shows it. If Rick and I have spoken, that can happen, it's gotta be like a cul-de-sac of some sort or something like that. He can't use Bab's Road or Bab's Lane unless the town council were agreeable to let him upgrade it to a state standard. And I don't know if that's in your plans, or that would make enough sense to you, but Bab's Lane would have to be upgraded, or this would have to be cut off of the cul-de-sac.
In other words, he can't, he has no out路.
No, he can come down up here. Up here at the entrance for Spring Hill Road. There is still an entrance that way.
I don't know where that one is.
And Bab's Lane can be upgraded to a state-maintained system. Make sure there's enough right-of-way, but I dare say there already is when the town took it for its industrial park.
Philip, what's the other piece of property right there that's going down shaded?
This is a piece of property that, as I understand it, part of the contract to purchase, but this piece of property's in the county. The county line is here, and that piece of property, I think it says...
Self-story.
Can I take you to East Courthouse Road? It does, but Courthouse Road. And if you're familiar where the road is that he uses to get in, that road is right here, it has a sewage pump station, if you're familiar with it. It's a wooded lot. It's part of the Gravit property. I think that a purchase of the property would include that parcel, but the zoning is not applicable to it. He would have to approach the county for any kind of zoning to...
I didn't know there was additional access to that property.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Okay? Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak?
I have a quick question for you. The conservation wetland on Clayhome property.
The town's...
But do you think about that like a state-protected or just a piece of swamp?
It's kind of a wetland piece of swamp area, if your government's familiar with it.
It's not like it's exactly wetland.
As part of the industrial park project, this was done about 30 years ago, when the town did the original industrial park and the water tank went up. Most, if some of y'all remember that. When that was done, the town, and I don't know why they had to, but they placed a conservation easement. Now, the conservation easement is not held specifically by anybody. It is designated as a conservation easement. It's not the ones that I used to work on so much where people get tax credits for them and make money and do all those kind of things. This is just as part of the industrial project, impark project 30 years ago, who had probably required perhaps by the four visioneers or whoever then was doing the wetland in the demolition. It's a pretty swampy low spot, and there is a conservation easement specifically placed on there.
Is that something we're gonna have to worry about, protecting this as...
No, it's perpetual. It's recorded at the courthouse, and it's a perpetual document, just like a conservation easement would be perpetual. It just doesn't go away. All right? So, no, we, the town can't even extinguish it, is it one or two?
Are there any other, anybody else wanna come forward and speak either for or against? Come to the podium, please.
Can I just speak?
No, please come to the podium. Name for the record address?
I just have a few questions.
College, are you on College or Sixth?
I'm on College.
College, okay.
But I own property, I own 76 acres, I own East Courthouse and 360. I just have a few questions. The housing that you're talking about putting in here, is that something, that development, is that gonna be something that y'all maintain, or are you just gonna bust this area up and sell homes to people and then just up the room and do whatever they wanna do, or y'all gonna regulate the development?
Well, there would be covenants and restrictions. The way the development is designed is to have different villages. There'll probably be dozens of different villages throughout the community. Each village will have its own home style, size, price ranges, driven by the market. Some of it could be townhomes, single-family, one and a half, two-story, et cetera. Each village would have its own HOA, covenants and restrictions.
Now, y'all planning on developing the entire property all the way back to, through the creek, to the creek line?
Over a seven to 10-year period, but...
It gets wet back there on y'all's side and the creek, so how much of a barrier is there gonna be?
If I may, the property's fairly heavily wooded around a perimeter. Most of that wooded area around the perimeter is gonna have to be remained. It drops off, there's creeks, et cetera. So, there's gonna be a nice isolated buffer around this whole subdivision. It was also our intention to retain as many trees as we can to provide separation between the villages, as well as the medical assisted living, senior apartment area, et cetera.
So, y'all aren't talking about trying to do anything with the creeks to back up any further water on your property?
Can't do that by preservation laws and restrictions, where you have buffers and setback requirements for all of them.
Chairman McCarthy, did you, planning council get that, or you want the map turned around and you want to see?
Got it.
You got it? Okay.
If at some point, Mr. Byers could give us an overview of the whole project, if you would, please.
Well, if you don't mind, chairman, I wanna go and get this dispensed with this public hearing, and then we'll turn it over to your planning commission, and then you can hear testimony. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak for or against the proposal?
So, Mr. Byers, you're not gonna speak for, I guess?
Podium, please.
I'd like to hear what you have to say, too.
Name and address, Mr. President.
I'm Jim Pridgen. I live on the outside of Blackstone, but I own 90 acres right across the road from this, in the town limits.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thought you had, thought you had to. No, he just passed out. That's what, he just passed out. You gonna look at it. You got a, I'm sorry, if you got another one of these handouts?
Do not. Did I miss Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, that's okay.
Well, I don't need it. I don't need it.
Did you not get one of them? I'm sorry, Ms. Thompson.
That's okay.
No worries.
I was running, about running out of cartridge when ink was...
No problem.
In time.
We're good.
I like to start off by saying, I'm not a very good public speaker, but I certainly appreciate the opportunity to come and speak about this important issue to our town. I do wish Mr. Byers great success. I hope it works out great, because if it does, it would probably be good for me in the long run. But I guess I'd like to, before I get started into some facts I'd like to present, I'd like to wonder, why are we having a joint hearing instead of the planning commission having a hearing, and then two weeks, three weeks later, there's another public hearing at the town council? Why are we doing that differently?
The town manager's much more adept at explaining to you than I am.
Well, I don't know what the compressed time schedule is. Mr. Byers had asked us for a resolution by a certain period of time. We can't guarantee that, but what we can guarantee is that we can meet state law and state obligations, or the town's obligations, for the public hearing. Now, whether council or planning commission proceed with the project, or proceed with the recommendation, or act on the project, is something certainly that they have to decide. But in order to compress the schedule, we did a joint public hearing tonight. This will be the public hearing for, so this is the one public hearing, because it's been my experience, and I wish the mayor was here, because depending on newspaper coverage...
Gee, thanks.
Depending on, sorry, but depending on newspaper coverage, the planning commission hearing can be much different, and depending on which side you're on, than the second public hearing that comes before the town council. So, we've lost that second opportunity for people. There's a lot of interest here tonight, but there's a lot of people who aren't here. This is the Fourth of July. We're in the Fourth of July week. We've got five new town council members coming on, and we're running only one public hearing. It's a recipe to me for disaster or for success, depending on how you look at the project. So, anyway, that's just one thing I wanted to get straight up front, because I didn't understand why that was happening. Okay. With that said, I guess I don't wanna try to give you my opinion so much as just some facts and figures, because to me, the facts don't bear it out. And I think we have to base things on fact. University of Virginia, Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service, says the Nottaway County population projections are gonna grow by 200 between 2020 and 2020 and 2030. And from 2030 to 2040, they grow by a whopping two people. We're not growing population-wise. Matter of fact, I think there was a piece in our own paper eight or 10 months ago about population was declining in Blackstone. So, the population projections from the experts don't support a project of this size. Where are the people going to come from? That I don't understand. The second two pages in what I gave you was right out of the FASTC exhaustive study that the GSA did. The GSA did an exhaustive study on the economic impact of FASTC coming to Blackstone, going to Nottaway County. And the bottom line is, the first, the first one there says that only 15% of the expenditures would be spent in Nottaway, 70% in Chesterfield, and 15% in the other surrounding counties. But on the second page there at the top, what I'd like to point out, it says that in 2020, Nottaway County could expect new population in the county of 82 persons from FASTC. And this is from the old FASTC document, where it was gonna be way up in 700 to 1100 full-time employees. Right now, FASTC is down to 300, 3 to 400? Is that the right range?
Last time it was over 400.
A little over 400. So, you could take the 82 down from there if you want to, just leave it all the way up at 82. It's still, where are the people gonna come to fill all this housing we're putting in?
If you don't mind, I have a comment, if council, planning commission wants to weigh in. It's not the job of this body to scrutinize this project. The job of this body is to take it in consideration, is it worthy of adjusting to zoning? Our entrepreneurs are welcome here, and I guess these projections are what they are, projections. So, you know, there was a time where I heard about industries like Glock Firearms was gonna build a plant here. Who knows? Walt Disney might wanna buy some land at Pickett. But I appreciate your comment and your homework, but it appears to me, in my eight years sitting up here, our duty is, is to determine whether the project merits being changed in the zoning.
I agree. I agree 100%. So, let's go ahead and talk the zoning piece out of it. The next page, if you look at, there's a zoning, and it's kinda hard, if you try to take the zoning in order to go down through it, what is R1, what is R2, what is R3? So, I tried to just give you a thing that has a bunch of X's on there that tells you what you four I missed. And if you look, RS, which is the property, the Eppington Forest, that's one acre per home.
RS, yeah.
RS, RS District. The R1 district, which is what this is zoned now, is what, three to eight homes per? But I've got that on the next page. But before we get into that, you've got single-family dwelling, schools, churches, parks, playgrounds, accessory buildings, public uses... accessory buildings, public uses, gardens, home occupations, satellite dishes. Those are the same in all of these we're talking about, okay? Then when you get down to R one, you can add home, home care centers with not more than four children. I don't know, it says, it says some different things in there about home care centers, I think it's just some typos within the, the ordinance.
There's multiple different types based on state.
Okay, well, it only says four in R one. So, then when you get to R two, the only thing that changes from R one, RS and R two, you add in two family dwellings, and you add in townhouses. You also add, by exception, general hospitals, clubs and lodges. So, that's, that's everything from R two all the way to RS, RS one. But when you add R three, everything we just talked about is in there, plus multifamily dwellings, group homes, daycare centers, funeral homes, rooming and boarding, I don't know what rooming and boarding means, tourist, tourist homes, gen- and then when you get to the use of, by exception, general hospitals, clubs and lodges, mobile home parks, and mini warehouses slash self-storage. So, that's what you add when you jump to a R three. So, so with that said, let's switch over to the next page if we could, look at density. On the density side of the house, like we said, one acre out in Eppington Forest and more. In the R one district, you can get one to three units per acre. In an R two district, you can get three to eight units per acre. In an R, that's R two, R three, eight or greater per acre, just eight or greater, it doesn't, it doesn't limit it.
It does, guidelines.
I, I understand, there, there are guidelines.
If you look at the actual zoning ordinance, it does specify exactly how many you can have of everything.
Does it?
It does.
I would like to point out, I would like to point out that the planning commission is well schooled on, on this, and they all have, they all have experience. Um, there's some, there's some, uh, new members of council here, um, they have a well-able town manager that will guide them through it, so...
I, I understand.
I appreciate the, I appreciate the educational opportunity, but I, I believe the planning council is well versed on their responsibilities and what the districts are.
With all that said, and I took one set of apartments in town we're all probably familiar with, Denwoodie Avenue, Frankie Williamson has some apartments there, it's eight units in that thing, I believe.
Those are apartments.
Okay, townhouses, that's great, okay, townhouses, that's great. So, they're townhouses, so there's eight of them in there.
Correct.
I took the road in front of it, the parking behind it, and if you take that and you look at it, you're getting about eight units on point seven five acres. If you took that and multiplied it out by three hundred and fifty-seven point one acres, which is what we're, we're being requested to zone, R three, three hu- three hundred and fifty-seven point one acres, that's three thousand eight hundred and six units. Again, you know, the, how do you feel that?
Well, there's proper's involved, too. So, actually, my short discussion with the town manager today, this is gonna, it's, it's kinda like a duck. It's gonna walk and talk like a, like an R two, not an R three.
So, I'm, I'm looking at the proper's, and, and what the town manager's saying, and I don't read it exactly like that, maybe it just needs to be worded a little bit different, or maybe I'm just reading it wrong. It says apartments, R three, are restricted only to a project limited to one, four point six acre, age-restricted apartment complex. So, does that say there's only gonna be one age-restricted or only one apartments? 'Cause I read it as only one, it's gonna be age-restricted.
What this means is only one area of the property will permit multifamily homes. That's how I want six acres.
That's it, everything else is townhouses?
Or duplexes or single families.
Single, single families, so, so with that, you could go up to three thousand eight hundred units in what's left there.
No, I don't think you could, because you haven't taken out any accommodations for the road either.
I did, no.
Or you haven't taken out any accommodations for the separation between buildings, you need to look through those pretty carefully.
I, I, I did, I did read some of those, that's why I took in the parking and I took in more, I took in more than just the building when I came up with the point seven five. So, that takes care of that. The last thing I'd like to cover there, so if, if the demographers are right, again, they're projections. If FASTC, and another thing, on FASTC, I did a, I did a quick look Friday at Fort Pickett. I got some information from the human resource office. Out of four hundred and thirty-six jobs the human resource office tracks, thirty-six of them have a zip code of two-three-eight-two-four. Fort Pickett's been there seventy-five years, the National Guard mates facility's been there fifty-five years, and the National Guard headquarters has been there twenty-five years. Why should we think FASTC's number of people are gonna live in two-three-eight-two-four? And two-three-eight-two-four covers a lot of people that don't live in the town limits, by the way. But that's, that's just straight projection. So, with, with all that said, how could you fill something like that? Well, I did a little bit of, a little more research, and this is dated, but it comes from the, uh, Virginia Housing website. In Notaway County, the need to, the need and supply of low-income rental housing to, the need versus the supplies, on that last, last page you've got there, and the next page it shows you what it is. In other words, we need approximately five hundred and fifty-five, fifty-two units, but we only have two-twenty-four. And it's, in a town of Blackstone, in the, excuse me, this was in Notaway County, because it only goes down to county as far as the data I had there. So, you can see there is a need for low-income housing, and I'm not against that. I think we need to make that a priority. I think in, in the town of Blackstone, if you go back and read in the, in the, uh, our, our plan, a comprehensive plan, it's one figure that really scared me on there, from two thousand, I forget what the dates were exactly, but the amount of rental ownership homes to rental homes, really just the, the rental home soared, and homeownership, people living in homes they own went way down.
You've lost me, Mr. Pridgen, you, why, why is this relevant to this proceeding? I mean...
The, I guess because if, if we, to me, the, the proper zoning would be to try to infill, infill all the blank areas we already have in town. You're out around town, there's a lot of vacant lots that could be infilled with nicer apartments, like Frankie's got on, uh, Denwoodie Avenue, that would put those people in places where they're part of the community, not just stick all the low-income housing in one parrot, one place, out on the outskirts of town, which, in a place, well, it's...
Yeah, we're being discriminatory, yes.
I, I understand, well, I don't, I won't say that, but the demand, the only demand that I could find in this area, and I also did it for all the neighboring counties, the demand is there for that.
Excuse, excuse me, excuse me, I'm gonna stop you right there. Chairman McCarthy, do you have any questions for Mr. Pridgen? Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
But I, I'd like to finish if I could, and I, I'll wrap it up real quick.
Well, your time is getting, is, is shortening down.
I, I understand. If I could borrow that map back there, I don't know if I can get, can I get it around front?
Chairman, let you go through, do you have an answer?
I, I think, I, I think if you don't mind, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak to the council.
Let me, let me end on a positive note, because I'm not against, I started off saying I am, I'm for this project, I hope it works out. But if you look at, if you've taken, this is a great project for this four hundred and eighty-eight acres. It probably makes the most profit possible for this four hundred and eighty-eight acres. But if you look at the town zoning map overall, if you, if you work toward concentrating the housing in town, filling in the blank areas, and leave this entire, leave that area out there something that could be industrial, you could come with, with six hundred acres, if you combine it with our current industrial bar, you could average out six hundred acres with water and sewer, possibly three-phase power, and if you combine it with some acres on Hillside Road, you could have eight hundred acres, which may attract an industry.
Sir, the planning council, nor the town council, is in the development business?
I, I understand.
So, I, I...
But, but we're in, we're in the zoning...
We're satisfied?
Yes, sir, we're in the zoning business, sir.
Okay.
Not, not the planning business, and that's, that's what I'm talking about is...
We're gonna, we're gonna move along now, and we're gonna allow the planning commission to take this up here. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this proposal?
I, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for or against the proposal as we've, we've been, um, speaking about tonight? With that being said, I'm gonna close the public hearing, uh, on both, both items, and I'm gonna turn, turn the meeting over to Chairman McCarthy for the planning council to deliberate.
Come up here and sit? No?
I, I would like to hear from Mr. Byers about his vision for the, for the project, and, and what the line is.
Take it. At this time, directed toward the planning council, sir, thank you.
Again, my name's Rick Byers, I'm the applicant for rezoning. The project here we presented here today, traditionally known as Crail Place to the Grabbit Property, we've submitted it as Austin Woods, is a master plan development, consisting of general business and residential and ancillary services. And those ancillary services are going to include assisted living, health care, memory care, et cetera, over time, that will service a part of the community that's probably age-targeted for retirement. We have studies as well, that show that thirty-seven percent of all projected retirements over the next thirty years are looking for rural historic environments. This phenomenon has already taken place in the mountains of Virginia and North Carolina, et cetera. We think that Blackstone, and in this report, they're looking for areas that are one hour, one to two hours of a major metropolitan area, which we consider Richmond that. We have an hour from an airport, thirty, thirty-five minutes to a train station, a terminal, et cetera. So, we envision with Pickett and FASTC, et cetera, a two-hour marketing radius in here for active adult living, progressive care throughout the community over time. We're in discussions with VCU as well as lots of work, possibly building a twenty-four-hour emergency care facility, diagnostics, et cetera. With enough land as related, a certificate could have used, over the next five to ten years, became available for a microhospital, we've still got enough land here to be able to provide that. In addition to that, we're providing just four acres of land for senior apartments only. We proffered it would not be any apartments or manufactured housing throughout the community. This main feeder road system here would be surrounded by residential villages. Again, those villages, driven by the market, would be of different housing styles and prices, et cetera. This two-thirds of the land would be more targeted towards workforce, whether it's Pickett, FASTC, surrounding businesses surrounding the area. And then the need to commercial here to service this community, which would be general business, hotel, corporate apartments, retail, restaurant, fuel, et cetera. Some of the components of the community that we're proposing are an aggregate, a agricommunity component, where we would work with Virginia Tech to provide organic farming, et cetera, throughout this village. It would also be a wellness community, so there would be walk trails throughout the whole community, leading up and around the lake here, and even to the commercial area. There's a thirteen-acre lake, it's a beautiful lake, but it's not really large enough to provide waterfront living for individual houses. We feel like the lake should be beneficial to the whole development, so that's gonna be an attraction, and it's why we're, uh, putting recreation, neighborhood commercial, and the medical village, et cetera, around the lake. We project this project to be a seven to ten-year project. We would like it to be in construction by spring of two thousand and nineteen. We're excited about it, we have a nice plan, um, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Philip. I do believe in two thousand and sixteen, this was designated an urban, designated urban area for this type of development. We feel like we're in the comprehensive use plan, and that's, that's our vision. Now, eventually, we will submit to the town a more finite master plan, will actually show all the villages, lot sizes, et cetera, and that will come probably over the next six months. Question? Sure. Where, where Habs is gonna be supported, where jobs gonna come from, and all these other things? Well, we believe that we can capture more of FASTC than what's being projected. We keep hearing, one of the things we have continued to get from the real estate community is no inventory. So, people are leaving the area, we're watching tax dollars leave Blackstone and go elsewhere, whether it's for short-term stay or long-term, because we do not have a nice development here to serve us. A lot of these employees coming to FASTC, et cetera, are coming from Northern Virginia and other areas. They're looking for nice neighborhoods and services we don't currently have here in Blackstone. I think with this development, another thing that this kind of development does, and we've had a discussion with FASTC, there may be other expansion opportunities coming to Fort Pickett. One of the things they always look at, and I've had this conversation with GSA, is their housing available for our employees. If not, they're gonna look at other places. Right now, we have no inventory here of any type. So, we feel like this is a good risk. This will create a three to four hundred million dollar tax base when it's fully built out to the town, instead of watching it all go elsewhere. So, without any other questions that I may be able to answer?
Well, the majority of this is, is more leaning toward progressive care, so you start, you know, a lot of assisted livings that I, I...
Well, I'm, I'm projecting about one-third of the total community would be age-targeted, two-thirds would be workforce. This would be independent living, anybody fifty-five and over could live, but over time, as the ages progress, I'm certified age-in point special, but it's everything every day. Those, so, these homes would be built truly aged in place, and then we would have those ancillary services, and we've got our university reports that show that seniors looking for retired areas want those ancillary services going to suck. So, we, we think we've got it well-planned here, and that we've got something exciting here that would be attractive to a lot of military retirees, et cetera, and a two-hour radius. We've got the Gulf Four Gulf Forces within ten to fifteen minutes here. We've got the reservoir, we're plenty close to day trips, there were wireeries, et cetera, things in the mountains, et cetera.
Would you be bringing in outside contractors or trying to use local?
Obviously, we'd wanna use local, I'm not su- you know, depending on the pace of the development, I'm not sure, not sure there's enough workforce here to handle all the construction just like in FASTC.
Well, we're right across the street, and we do a lot of assisted living, so we could help you out.
So, how many years are you talking about in this regard? I think you're looking at seven to ten years for a well plan. I think you're, you're unwise to think it could be done any quicker than that.
So, your, your plan is based on those ten-year plans?
Ten-year plan and phases where the market would drive that, extend to that dollar?
What's first stage? What's first stage?
First stage, right now, we're working, we want to get these security trainings here, we want those per diem dollars here in Blackstone. So, that's all, we're targeting right now, we would like to have four to six hundred of corporate apartments, furnished corporate apartments, and a park light setting, operated similar to a hotel, but an apartment complex. Uh, we also have additional hotel sites, uh, obviously food and, and other ancillary services, work and trainings. There's thirteen million dollars in per taxable per diem revenue that's, is gonna lead Blackstone, and we'll do something.
My question is, I, I'm very much for this, and Phil will tell you, I've been on it back for a long time about some of these projects. Is this too little, too late? In other words, I felt like we should have been addressing this issue.
I'll be the first one to tell you, I wish I'd have not done this a year and a half earlier than what I did, but I don't think we're too late.
Okay.
We've been in numerous discussions with State Department, and, uh, you know, they're as fancy as we all get going on this. They are, don't wanna be busting these trainings out of town. We're gonna save them a lot of money in aggravation and logistics.
Well, I mean, I've watched, because I used to work on the west end of Richmond, and I drove from here to there every day for twelve years. I watched three sixty get built up, and it was like, it was in preparation for FASTC and to accommodate FASTC, because they were putting those housing, and I've been back in those communities, driving around, and it's massive back there, and I'm like, I, I, my concern for the people who think that that's where you wanna live, is they don't realize how long it's gonna take them to get from their house to Fort Pickett, and then once they buy that house in Chesterfield and realize that it's still gonna be forty-five minutes to an hour drive to get down here to Pickett, um, those houses in Chesterfield, I would like to kind of see go, oh, let's find some other industries for them.
We feel like we can match the same product, Apple's app, here, between shoulders up to the, or anywhere, fifty to a hundred pounds, to, or anywhere, fifty to a hundred thousand, and the average, or.
Well, that's one of the reasons I live.
And I think that's going to change some minds, it's a plug, we're changing, we've got riding against the freight. As, as the gentleman touched upon, we're, we're housing, there's an issue, bashful, it's We feel like we've got a product in the development here that may capture a lot of the, of Fastsea business than was originally projected. Some of the feedback, well, lives, we're concerned our lives won't be able to work, I'm not sure the lives will have to work, if they're spending, on average, seventy-five thousand dollars less per unit of eight minutes.
What, what are your home prices for the single-family residential? What, what kind of price range are you, are you proposing?
I think in the, in the age-restricted area, you could be one-fifty, one-seventy-five to two-fifties range, and probably in the workforce, probably just under two-hundred up to three-hundred range, probably one-eighty-five to two-fifty.
And what, what size of lot do you plan on, I mean, where it'd be basically hundreds of thousands of things?
Probably, you know, a lot, again, a lot of this area, probably minimal would be, like, you know, maybe thirty thousand, but, uh, we have to get any big wide lot, minimum of that. Because of topography, et cetera, some lots are going to be bigger than others, some lots, like, here, in the construction areas, that we're not all usable, but they'll be part of the lot. Again, there'll be a nice buffer around the whole development, trees that reach fifty to a hundred feet, and that's really, anyone living over here is not even going to be a C in.
As you, if this project goes through, even as you go into phase one of corporate apartments and the building is supported, we are in kind of a metaphor of black hole here in our weekend. Would you make it an essential part to, it would almost be, and that's absolutely necessary to pick them up and get that medical facility on site as you go into phase one, just because of locality and are not having access to a, put a medical facility in there on site? Is that in your plans to be right up there in phase one?
Well, it's not, it's actually in phase two, and what's driving that is sewer. Phase one, which is sixty-six acres here, can be served by existing radies, sewer, the whole rest of the development, including all the commercial, is going to have to be served by a new pump station enforcement, which we've got planned in the community. I will tell you this, that we've offered to donate a pad-ready site to VCU Bond Support to build the emergency.
What about, like, a satellite, like, we have Bond Support, because it's over here in Perryville, but if you're talking about influx of, you know, building corporate apartments, yes, but we don't have the medical facility or the doctors in the county to support it, but they can keep it right now, so.
We are aggressively pursuing that, hospitals don't move quickly, and there's state regulation permitting and things involved, but.
That, that would just have to be a major part at the very beginning.
We, we have planned for that, and we have made the offer to actually provide a pad-ready site with utilities at no cost, with a twenty-four-month commitment to start, so they have not accepted that, we have been letters of intent, we've had two meetings with VCU, our next meeting is with Bond Support, and we will be aggressively pursuing that. When we were visiting with VCU in South Hill, there was actually Pickett soldier there in the emergency room, and it does make no sense to have to bust, uh, few people thirty-six miles in any direction for a healthcare facility. I believe this clinic here shuts down at five, six o'clock, so there's no half an hour spare. I, I believe VCU and Bond Support understands that, and, and because of what we're proposing here, there's a lot higher chance that they're going to do something.
Is that the simple bond?
And community?
Get his attention. Get his attention. Mr. Byron, get his attention, get his attention, for me, get his attention for me.
One more question, what are, what are you going to do about three-phase electricity here?
All right, turn this around. Go ahead, you can answer this last question, the public hearing's been closed, this is for the planning council, but go ahead, sir. Go ahead, what's your question about three-phase power?
I, I, I just was curious, because you've got commercial development there, what's happening?
We're gonna have, we're gonna have to, have to, um, the town will, will pay Southside Electric to install three-phase current in there, and then it will be paid for by the project, is that correct?
Southside have rejected or rebuffed our efforts to create a distribution point, and it looks like, and after speaking with the State Corporation Commission, the only way, not only for this project, but for our industrial park and Mr. Carlo's building, which was really what started the discussions with, uh, Southside, you know the history, you know the situation, it's, it's, it's unfortunate, but it is what it is, State Corporation Commission admittedly said, we can't force them to do anything, but we can force them to charge you appropriately, we can charge, uh, require them to, to bill you appropriately and all those kinds of things, and sadly, if you read the proffers that Mr. Byers provided, after lengthy discussion, I believe probably the one way to assure our property, the town, we have over a hundred acres there at the industrial park, you have a, a metal building or a warehouse building, and you've got need for it, that cooperatively, what I'm proposing is to create a special tax district for that entire section of town, and that the property owners pay a pro-rata share for the construction of three-phase power there and get it done. We've been talking about it for seven years that I've been here, and still no, no movement. A special tax district, which will apply specifically to the property Mr. Byers is talking about, the town owns, and then Mr. Carlo's property, and I would assume we would assign a responsible, responsibility based on acreage, or some other equitable way to do that, but I am going to ask town council, this new council, if we can begin the process of getting that done, otherwise, I'm not a hundred percent sure how can, how can proceed. Got to have three-phase power. He's got to have it. We've got an industrial park that's no more than a place to go bush hogging and cut hay, there's broom straw out there, it's not even good hay, and, um, we've got an unusable industrial park. We've got a three-phase line that runs through the middle of it, we can serve anybody, but Southside Electric's territory, and admittedly, that fight has been fought, the town doesn't want any piece of that, nor do I expect that there's going to be any, any discord about it, we recognize it's their territory, but we've offered to create a, a distribution point whereby we could sell it to them wholesale, and then they could in turn sell it retail to whatever customer, and I don't think they're willing to do that.
Mr. Van Orbit?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Nash has a question.
What's the price tag one, getting three-phase? Originally, it was two-seventy-five.
It was two-seventy-five, and then apparently, Southside Electric has changed its, uh, billing policy, and this is what we've asked the State Corporation Commission to do, is to make sure the four-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollar quote that they gave us is accurate.
Members of council, do you have any questions on the developers' plans? Ms. McCarthy?
You know, the planning commission is just here to address the zoning issue, does anybody else have any further comments about that? It's all been very informative, thank you everyone for coming to give us your input, and it was exciting to hear what you had planned, and your projections, and appreciate you coming. At this point, I think it's appropriate for us to render our decision to council, of course, you all will not be voting on this.
So, will the council, I don't know, we would like to hear your recommendations.
It's not going to be.
The intent is not to have council vote on it tonight, but to consider on the sixteenth of July.
Okay, all right. Any motions from the planning commission?
We're going to take the two areas, certainly.
How about the, uh, from the R-one to the general business parcel?
These three small sections, is everybody in the audience, this piece, this piece, and then a portion of this that was left as R-one, when the grab family is rezoned, and I can calculate that.
Really clean that up.
I'm going to, I'm going to just, this is going to be a good use.
I'll make a motion that those three parcels be taken to the business chamber.
Subject to the written proffers?
We're applicable.
Okay, we're applicable.
Correct, in this case.
All right. Okay.
I'll, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, the second matter is the rezoning of the property, the greater portion of the property from R-one to R-three.
With Crawford conditions, because it's important to understand that Mr. Bridgen brought up some valid points, that without a Crawford condition, yeah, it could be a massive mobile home park by right, it could be a massive double-wide manufactured home.
Sure, there'd be no, no manufactured homes, certain roof lines, um.
They'd be agreeable to the tax assessment district for the power, and that's part of it, I, I think we've all got each other's attention, we want to get that done. The apartments would be limited to that area, that four-point-six acres?
And age restricted.
And age restricted, and we can clean that up too, some of the terminology, I'll make sure that everybody understands very clearly what that is, that apartments would, there would be no building permit issued for what we consider to be apartments. Now, townhouses may look like apartments, but they don't meet that standard, okay? And that would be restricted here, they'd be age restricted, and that would be the only portion of the property with apartments and multifamily buildings.
The gentleman whose property puts up against this property with your question, some relief, can we relieve that to some extent by making sure that there's a good buffer in that area?
I think I heard Rick say that there would be a buffer, yeah.
But by nature, there's going to have to be a tree buffer, just because of the time to work.
Because of my land.
Property, it would be, it would serve no interest of anyone to clear any trees, it's not available, so.
So, you can assure us you will leave a good buffer in there to help protect this property?
And we can add that as a Crawford condition on that, that area in there, and actually, it's, it's actually going to be all four-sixty along the back. I think pretty much the total perimeter of the property, except when you get up into here, and, and when you get to the end of Babs Lane, and everything around this is going to have a minimal seventy-five, a hundred-foot natural upper tree.
As a Crawford, you'd be agreeable?
Yeah, I would be agreeable to that.
Minimal buffer, on those areas, I guess, that you're talking about?
Can we specifically make sure that it's on the area that, that would be around his property? I'm not as concerned about the four-sixty area, but I'm sure.
So, would it start here, and continue there, along every, this Warren property, here, and I apologize, getting you can't see, and this Warren is here, so it would start at the end of Babs Lane, obviously, the town's not concerned about a buffer, but as it meets private properties, now, when we say that, so we clarify, we, our landfill, old landfill doesn't really need a buffer, I think we're probably very good, so we would say any private land, old property, so I would say actually even from that corner, back down, and then back to the north of four-sixty.
I don't think that that will affect his point of thinking anyway, I just think it clarifies.
Yeah, I have this problem for offering that, and then also, we have, we're going to have a landscape burner, along Babs Lane, there's trees, et cetera, to protect the community traffic as well.
We call it a hundred-foot undisturbed buffer, adjacent to private properties, to the south and the west of the proposed development, does that make sense to you? Is that clear for the property on the adjacent, Johnny? Their hecko, is that correct?
I understood.
So, you've incorporated that into your motion?
Oh, we didn't know that. Oh, but we will.
Don't get a family, want to add us a clause in there, that if there are any public utility easements or anything, any lines that have to go through there, that that's allowable, if the power has to come through, but we would not allow any building or development of that.
And if it's perpendicular.
And, and, and describe it as a ninety-degree angle, and that sort of thing, instead of running parallel, require any utility easements to run at a ninety-degree intersection.
Isn't that a very good run to four sixty back in there?
Pardon?
A dirt road to run to four sixty back in there.
I'm not, this is all limited access, is something, you've owned property down there a long time, Mr. Bridgen, as far as I know, this is limited access, there's a fence along that southern boundary of the rightway there, so there shouldn't be any perforations, if there are, then that's been special conditions.
That's all a dirt road, that can run out of there.
That were great too, when a road was built or made four-lane years ago, but it should be a limited access throughout, and then the next access point would be that, I guess it's Courthouse Road that turns to the right and goes up, back up to four-sixty where the town's temple is.
Those can come out.
Yeah, there shouldn't be a perforation in the road or an entrance. And all the entrances, V-Dive wouldn't permit an entrance on up to four-sixty, and I don't think, and Mr. Byers would necessarily want it, it would be very expensive, I think all entrances would be there on Northwest Avenue.
I'll make a motion, that is, go ahead, and visit the R-one to R-three that's requested with the proffers in place that have been suggested.
And has amended the seating?
Yes, amend. Now, I'll second that motion with the comment that I think it's a forward-looking project, and I also think that we will look at projections that say that not a way it's going to grow, but projects like this will break that structure.
All in favor, please say aye.
Would you care to adjourn your, your?
We would adjourn our.
Okay, members of council, there's two choices here I'd like you to do, I'd like you to either move to take this up now, or table it for the July sixteenth meeting.
So, let's wait until we get our other two to hit leave?
But, I'm sorry, is that a motion?
Second.
All right, Mr. Nash has moved to table this, table the recommendation from the planning commission, commission till July sixteenth. Ms. Thompson is second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstain, four-zero.
Make one announcement, many of you got a letter, I assume that Warren got a letter, many people got a letter, this was the public hearing, so there will not be another letter sent, we do know, the sixteenth, at seven o'clock, would be the ad hoc, beginning of the meeting, and it's getting pretty close to the beginning of the meeting, so probably the hot topic we got going on, so, there won't be another letter, and there won't be another add to paper, but this is forewarning, that on the sixteenth of July, seven o'clock, council's not obligated, and they can continue, or they can table, and they can do some other things, not I will even make a vote, but it will be, and they are able to make a vote.
Mr. Van Orbit?
I do find it sort of egregious that the citizens of Blackstone are kind of on the foot to do the three-phase power, but we're, our hands are tied, we have to, I mean.
We have a no-cost solution.
Oh, I know, it's, it's.
If they would accept it, but they just can't.
And we won't profit one bit off of it.
But, but keep in mind, the town, Blackstone's residents will be on the hook for it.
Until it's paid off.
Until the payments come back from adjoining property owners, and, uh, I don't know if there's a better way to get this handled.
It's not.
I just don't, we battled this ring for, I think we've gone about as far as we can with it, I think the State Corporation Commission will make sure that the figures are correct, and then it's up to us to get it done.
So, we're getting, well, getting out there with five, close to five-hundred thousand dollars?
Where do you see that coming from?
At the bottom.
And that will be obviously incorporated into the tax district?
Yeah, I mean, whatever the cost is, then we would have to, let's say, for example, he's got five acres, we've got a hundred acres, okay? We would have to take each acre, I don't know a better way to do this, there may be a better way, but we assign a pro-rata share of the obligation, Mr. Carlo would have a small obligation, we would have somewhat larger, and obviously, the majority of it would be responsibility of Mr. Byers and his development. I, I see the project as having a deed of trust on the property, okay, so if there's default, the taxpayers have to be made whole, and that would, uh, we would have to do that, and, um.
And you mentioned earlier that Mr. Smith's property, I mean, could, if he needs three-phase, could he be included?
Well, that depends on where the delivery point is, okay? Obviously, we're talking about down this end, but I know Mr. Smith has concerns about getting it up here, now, I don't know how long it will take to creep up that road, but it's going to be a whole lot cheaper than four-hundred fifty thousand dollars, and I know you've, you've had the same issue, even with my predecessor, about getting power over there, and, um, I don't know, we're going to have to sit down and figure out exactly how to get it under there, yes, sir?
My question is, you said, out this, out of this money, you said he's going to be responsible for so much.
Paying it back, all right.
Of paying it back, Mr. Carlos is going to be responsible, and the. Of paying it back, Mr. Carlos is going to be responsible, and the town is going to be responsible, and it's all going to be broken down.
I, I, I think you have to assign the total cost and divide it by the number of acres, I don't, like I said, I don't know a better way to do it.
Even if we already service our own property with three-phase?
Yeah, but we can't hook up any private entities.
Correct, on what we can sell possibly.
Baseball field, I mean, we can sell ourselves power, but we can't sell to private entities.
Interesting.
So if an industry wanted to come to our industrial park right now?
Okay.
Unless they're willing to either produce a load letter saying that they're going to use enough power to justify the Southside, to, to reduce some of the cost of the construction, or that they, I can't do that.
Is it worth going back and says, uh, plan and plan?
Yeah.
We are planning, uh, we need this, because we're going to, we're going to generate as much as we can.
I believe, I believe you have some in presence tonight, so.
Some words, it looks like to me, we could, you know, do some negotiations there.
I agree.
I don't think we've gotten very far in the negotiating side of things.
Do we like? It'd be cheap.
It's bad.
No, it's outside. They don't want to sell it, they're going to sell it to us.
That's right.
They're the ones selling their pounds.
To let us hook them to connect.
Any other comments from, uh, members of council, any questions? Any, any other business to come for the council? Hearing none, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at seven-thirteen.